This is our formal meeting format. I ask my colleagues to acknowledge their presence on the voting board. At this time, I ask everyone to join me in a moment of silence. Please rise as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now proceed with our awards and recognitions. This is Riggs.
National Board Certified Teachers. The school board is proud to recognize the division's 24 newest National Board Certified Teachers. Let's meet them. Sarah Gorgeous, 2nd grade teacher at Thalia Elementary School. Kim Burnett, English teacher at Green Run High School. Keisha Chapman, 2nd grade teacher at Bird Neck Elementary. Jacqueline Cochran, 5th grade teacher at Christopher Farms Elementary School. Barbara Duncan, English teacher at First Colonial High School. Kathy Farrell, Guidance Department Chairperson at Green Run High School. Rebecca Fritzinger, 6th grade teacher at Old donation School. Carol Holt, English teacher at Green Run High School. Rebecca Howell, 3rd grade teacher at Three Oaks Elementary School. Kelly Lipkowski, Emotional Disability Teacher at Corporate Landy Middle School. Jennifer Nardelli, English teacher at Cox High School. Wendy Newman, 6th grade teacher at Old donation School. Amy Paulson, Title I Resource Teacher at Sea Tech Elementary School. Corbin Thomas Pinto, Vocal Music Teacher at Basehead High School. Kristen Schuman, Reading Specialist at Windsor Woods Elementary School. Tanya Valdelia, 3rd grade teacher at Bayside Elementary School. Heather Williams, Science Teacher at Salem High School. Beth Wright, Early Childhood Special Education Teacher at Princess Anne Elementary School. And Tara Yoi, Special Education 3rd grade teacher at Princess Anne Elementary School. Unfortunately, there have been five honorees that are unable to join us tonight. Elizabeth Dupont, Science Teacher at Salem High School. Adrian Kravshak, Gifted Resource Teacher at White Oaks Elementary School. Kathleen Mendoza, 3rd grade teacher at Tallwood Elementary School. Kathleen Scaronno from Lincoln Park Elementary School. And Elaine Chandular, Kindergarten Teacher at Pembroke Meadows Elementary School. However, we do want to recognize them as well. Now, the newest honorees now bring the school division's total of National Board Certified Teachers to 144. The fourth-highest in the Commonwealth. Created by Teacher for Teachers, National Board Certification is one of the most respected distinctions in the teaching profession because it's based on rigorous standards for what accomplished teachers should know and be able to do. This voluntary certification, which is offered in 25 certificate areas spanning 16 disciplines, takes anywhere from three to five years to complete. In order to receive certifications, candidates must: demonstrate standards-based evidence of the positive effect that they have on student learning; exhibit a deep understanding of their students', content knowledge, use of data, and assessments; show that they participate in learning communities; and provide evidence of ongoing reflection and continuous learning. Please join me in congratulating our newest National Board Certified Teachers one more time.
One of them was my cousin.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board. As always, I appreciate the time in our meetings to share with you and our community five things that you ought to know about Virginia Beach Schools right now. Number one, I want to thank our students, parents, teachers, and staff who transitioned to our longer school day this week. While there were several logistics that go into extending the day by 15 minutes, our teams across the division did a wonderful job making all of the new schedules work, including our cafeteria staff, our transportation team, and of course, all of our families at home. As a reminder, this new schedule will be in place through May 4th as we make up the instructional time lost this winter. Speaking of winter, at number two, I do want to reinforce with our families that we are in the middle of the winter flu season. As you may have seen on the news this year, many across the nation are dealing with a flu outbreak, and I want to remind our families that we do have a number of practices in place in our buildings to help keep the flu at bay. For example, our custodial teams do an incredible job disinfecting those areas with frequent student contact, things like doorknobs, desktops, etc. That said, parents, we again ask that if your child is exhibiting flu-like symptoms, including fever, please keep them home. For more information about the division's flu prevention measures, you can visit our school website. At number three, we just finished the first semester, and we're already talking about the next school year. Beginning next week, applications for our pre-kindergarten program for the 18-19 school year will be accepted at eligibility sessions held throughout the city. The first eligibility application sessions are scheduled for February and include Tuesday, February 20th at Diamond Springs Elementary from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., and Tuesday, February 27th at the Myra Obendorf Central Library from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. In order to be seen at the screening, parents and guardians are required to bring a completed application and various supporting documents that include things like proof of residency, birth certificate, and income statements. The pre-K program application is available online or may be requested at any VBCPS elementary school. In addition to that, we will be hosting these eligibility sessions through June, and families will be notified at the end of July of their acceptance or waitlist status. Also, for the next school year, at number four, students who applied for academies or advanced academic programs for the 18-19 school year, please start checking your inboxes. This week, all high school notification letters will be emailed to VBCPS students. If you are a non-VBCPS student and you are somehow listening to this, your letter will be mailed to you directly. If you need more information about the application timeline, you can visit vbschools.com. And finally, at number five, I'm honored to share that the Virginia School Boards Association is celebrating February as School Board Appreciation Month. This year's theme is "Advancing Opportunities for All," which the VSBA says reflects the top priority of local school board members as they advocate for public education with local, state, and federal leaders on behalf of all students. So, at your seats, you will see certificates from the VSBA recognizing your contributions as board members, and I will also mention that although you didn't have a lot of time to go down and look, we do have a few artifacts of recognition in Room 113 once the meeting is over tonight for you to please take a look at. And let me just finally join with the VSBA by thanking each of you for your work and your service in support of the children here in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Madam Chairwoman, that does conclude my report.
Thank you, Dr. Spence. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers on agenda items this evening?
Yes, ma'am, we do.
Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Spence. Regarding small purchases and professional service contracts in the bylaws, there's an added line that states professional services are exempt from these provisions. Because the school board is a steward of public monies, the services and provisions must be clarified: what specifically is included and what specifically is exempt. In addition to the public's right to know exactly how its money is being spent and to know the guidelines by which these decisions are being made, explicit guidelines allow the board to avoid even the appearance of impropriety. Therefore, all services and provisions should be specifically named in the bylaws. Further, the phrase "other reason for sole source purchase consistent with applicable law and regulation and as approved by the Director of Purchasing" is overbroad and vague. As your own attorney can attest to, under Virginia law, where a code or regulation exists and no remedy is offered in the code or regulation, no cause of action exists for violations. Where there is no cause of action, there is, for all practical purposes, no regulation at all. It is simply a suggested course of action. Again, the school board assumes stewardship of nearly 50% of the city of Virginia Beach's tax dollars. Therefore, all bylaws, rules, and regulations should be undertaken in good faith in an effort to instill confidence in the tax-paying public and assure all of us that violations will have consequences. Without an explicit remedy, the board undermines the public trust by saying, in essence, that violations are not important, which in turn makes it difficult to instill that confidence and to avoid the appearance of impropriety.
Next, we have Paul Day.
Good evening, Chairperson Anderson, Vice Chair McDonald, board members, and Dr. Spence. As Vice President of Virginia Beach Spark, which stands for Supporting and Promoting Accountability, Respect, and Knowledge, I'm here to speak on behalf of this organization regarding employee associations and organizations committed to provide in our schools. In the spring of 2017, a group of concerned parents and citizens met in the Virginia Beach Living Room. The group consisted of men and women from all walks of life, teachers, lawyers, businessmen, law enforcement, and full-time work-at-home parents. This group decided that our voices were not being heard in the Virginia Beach Public Schools, and we determined to change that situation. Each member currently has children in Virginia Beach Public Schools or has children who have graduated from the Virginia Beach school system. Now, one member, me, has a grandchild. Some of the members of this board have decided there was a need to update Policy 4-32, Employees' Association. This policy is so specific because it allows groups who have only employees or retirees as part of their memberships. You may as well call it the VBA Protection Act. The school board should welcome input from the community, including parents, students, and teachers who cannot afford to pay the $600 dues of the VBEA. There are teachers who do not want to be part of the VBA because of the political nature of the organization and is tied to the NEA, National Teachers Union. A board member commented on a school board meeting that VBA is not political. If you take a look at the Facebook page, you will see it's filled with a lot of political posts. If the majority of the board will not allow our organization or any other organization under the Employee Association section, then we should be under Section 7-31. This section seems to only allow one specific parent-teacher organization, the National PTA, and this policy favors one organization over another. The policy should read "any organization that has vested interests in Virginia Beach City Public Schools." How does not a conflict for the past VBA president, who is also a school board member, and the school board members who are also active VBA members, to not recuse themselves in the discussion regarding the definition of an employee association? The new policy definition will prevent all access by other existing education associations except for the VBEA. There must be room for people to advocate for policy changes who are not currently employed by the school system. In order to effectively advocate more access to administration, teachers, and the school board should be given. Three minutes speaking at a bimonthly meeting isn't access. We, as an organization, are legitimate stockholders, and we share the same interests and should be afforded the same opportunity as VBA. We request the same access to Virginia City Public Schools as VBA, school facilities, teachers, mailboxes, and bulletin boards, and all accesses that VBA is afforded. I'm trying to hurry. No organization is unique and deserving of special consideration over any other organization who has a vested interest in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Thank you.
Madam Chair, those are all the speakers I have signed up for the hearing on agenda items.
Thank you. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting on January 23rd. Motion is made by Mrs. Manning and seconded by Mrs. Haltz. The voting board is open. The chair will now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of our special meeting on February 6th. The motion is made by Mrs. Rye, seconded by Mr. McDonald. Voting board is open. The minutes have been approved. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for this meeting. The motion is made by Ms. McLeod, seconded by Ms. Riggs. The voting board is open.
Do we need to amend if we're going to come back and finish that workshop, or is it just understood?
I'm not sure. Do we need to amend? I don't think, because it states that we can...
It says needed. If you want to clarify that you will be...
Right.
Because you also have a closed session that you will be having, so you may want to clarify that you will be continuing afterward.
I think it's on there.
It actually says, as a part of our agenda, that recess into workshop if needed, so we'll come back to our workshop for additional questions, and we also have a closed meeting. So I don't think we need to amend. Voting board is open. The agenda has been adopted. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the... I'm sorry. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda... Oh, the consent agenda. Sorry, I lost my place. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that includes the Green Run Collegiate Evaluation Recommendations and the Commonwealth of Virginia 4570 Deferred Compensation Plan. The motion is made by Ms. Riggs, seconded by Ms. Melnick. Voting board is open. The consent agenda has been approved. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the Personnel Report and Administrative Appointments. Ms. Melnick has made the motion, seconded by Ms. McLeod. Is there any discussion? Voting board is open. The Personnel Report and Administrative Appointments have been approved. Dr. Spence, would you like to introduce our new administrators?
I certainly would. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. If I could ask Colleen Norman to please stand up. Ms. Norman comes to us having served for quite some time in the human resources field, most recently as a Human Resources Generalist at Education Management Corporation, Echol Incorporated, North Brooklyn Health Network, and then, most recently, as the Senior Human Resources Specialist at Liberty Tax Benefits. And I'm pleased this evening you've approved our recommendation for her to serve as Coordinator of Benefits in the Office of Consolidated Benefits. And I understand that you brought a guest with you. Welcome. Thank you. And if I could ask Jason Stanley to please stand up. Many of you will recognize Mr. Stanley. He's served from 2010 to 2015 as the band instructor at Independence Middle School and has served for the last two years as an administrative assistant at Lanestown High School, and I'm pleased this evening that you've approved our recommendation for Mr. Stanley to serve as Assistant Principal at Lanestown High School. And I believe you also have a guest with you.
This is my wife, Rachel Stanley.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here with us, and, Madam Chairwoman, that concludes.
Thank you, Dr. Spence. Next, under Action, we have recommendations for two policies from the Policy Review Committee. The chair will entertain a motion to approve Policy 3-32 concerning emergency small sole source purchases. The motion is made by Ms. Riggs, seconded by Ms. Melnick. Is there any discussion? Ms. Manning.
I would like to make a substitute motion that we refer this back to the Policy Review Committee.
Do you have a second?
Just the sole source.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Wiems, seconded. Is there any discussion? Ms. Manning?
I just want to state my reasons for sending it back. I have two, or maybe three. Ms. Rye did send out an email stating that we would get the updated version of the sole source contract or policy Monday evening, and I expected that we would receive that via email, and I never received it, so I never went to the SharePoint to see it, so I've actually not even seen the final version of it. So that's one reason. Also, as our speaker mentioned, we don't have any penalties for infractions in the policy, so without listing penalties for infractions, I don't know how sound the policy is. So I would like that to be reviewed by the Policy Review Committee as well.
Mrs. Rye, do you want me to address that, or would you like to address it first? Coming back at sole source, it has been in your agenda package available to you. The difference between this and the last time I brought it to you, we had another section on consultant services. Based on conversations we had about changes that will be coming to you for the contract policies, we realized that that section was going to have to change when we changed the contract one, so we decided to just pull that out. So you've seen most of this information before. You're just missing the added section that we'll come back to probably in April, March or April, when we finish the rest of the contract policies. Relevant to your question as to penalties, you wouldn't see penalties in any of our policies or regulations. There's never a fine or something. Depending on what the action is, if it's an employee doing it, then Human Resources would take the appropriate action, the department would take the action, it could be the Audit Department would take a look at it, Internal Audit Office would take a look at it, and it would come through an audit matter. If it's a criminal violation, at that point, it gets referred out. We don't have the ability to fine our employees, or then that falls under the Commonwealth of Virginia would handle the violations of the criminal matter. So you would not see that in our policies on there. What you would see is a referral to... If an individual is violating this, was an employee, that would be referred to Human Resources, and you would take the appropriate action through Human Resources.
Is there further discussion? Mrs. Rye.
Wiems.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mrs. Wiems.
Thank you. Ms. Melnick, I have a question. On Letter C, when only one known source exists or can be practicably identified...
That is a fun procurement term. That is only used pretty much in the Procurement Code and Virginia Procurement Code. It has a very specific meaning. We talked about this in the Policy Review Committee when the Director of Purchasing was down there. It's a very specific term used. It doesn't mean that there's no possible way. It's closer to what's reasonable on there. There might be a contractor in Alaska who could do it, but that wouldn't be practical for us to contract with somebody in Alaska to do it. That might be one way to look at it, or how far you could go out to find it, or there's not somebody that can meet the demand of services that we want. It's a procurement term used in there, so it looks a little strange, but in the procurement world, that makes sense to us, and that's how the term is used in the Virginia Procurement Code.
Okay, so the committee didn't discuss making that less vague, because do you have to pretty much go by that?
We felt, and the Director of Purchasing, Mr. Brailsen, did discuss that that is a term very specifically used, and he and his staff would understand that when dealing with that, contractors would understand that, and that is how the term is used. We don't spell it out here because it's in the Virginia Procurement Act.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Ms. Manning?
So, under Acceptable Reasons for Sole Source or Single Source Purchases, Item G, a unique professional expert is requested. This is the version that I downloaded from our agenda packet and that I found on SharePoint. Ms. Rye has said that, correct me if I'm wrong, that that has been changed to required?
I don't remember that. I have to tell you it was requested. I know it was requested. We had some discussion about whether that was needed. You would have to explain to the Director of Purchasing why you needed that person.
Well, the policy doesn't state that. It says a unique professional expert is requested. So to me, that's wide open.
Again, everything under sole source has to be approved by the Director of Purchasing, and that's within his realm to make that decision. So he would look at... You would give the explanation to him why this person was requested. You needed a certain speaker on a topic that you needed, and only that person spoke to that. That would be something you would do. You would have to explain that out, and that would be your Director of Purchasing would make that determination.
I mean, in light of problems that we've had with this, I'm not pleased with the term requested. I would rather see it be required.
And that was my understanding, too, so I would move that we put it up for...
Take it back.
What? If I can clarify. Ms. Manning, if your substitute motion is sent back, that would be one of the things you would want us to look at.
Mr. McDonald.
Thank you. Sorry, I don't have it right in front of me, but if I'm remembering correctly, the section is it's got multiple things that need to be required. Sure, if you will pass it down. Acceptable Reasons for Single Source Purchases. So there's multiple acceptable reasons. That one may not be one of the reasons used for that specific request, so to get that... So it's requested, but it's basically saying, one of the reasons why I am asking for the single source is because I'm requesting a professional expert, and that's why it's sole source. It's not whether it's requested or required. That one item, if my understanding is correct, is it's one of many items that can be used to justify a sole source contract.
Remember with a sole source, what happens is you send in the request to the Director of Purchasing. He has to certify it. He looks at it. He makes the determination. These are categories. Before, it was more generalized. He made the determination based on his professional expertise. You asked me to spell this out. We spelled it out. The Director of Purchasing would look. That would be one of the reasons he could look at, but again, you would still have to explain to him why that. And he might look and say, if you just want a speaker to talk to you about student performances, there are hundreds of them out there. I don't believe that meets the sole source requirement. If you say, I want Joel McDonald to speak, as his experience as a school board member is Joel McDonald, there's only one person, and that might meet the request.
Right. So, for example, if I'm using F as my reason, which says limited or proprietary system services, additional licenses, updates, specialized replacement parts, etc., that would apply to one sort of sole source contract, whereas if I was going... If I had an expert that I wanted to pull in, I'm specifically saying I'm requesting this expert. The language isn't saying that that is required. I mean, nothing... You can not do it, but it's requested.
You still... If you're the school that's trying to purchase this, you cannot make the decision yourself. You do have to go through the Director... If you're going to go sole source or single source, you have to get the Director of Purchasing to sign off on the sole source certificate.
I think Mr. Edwards was really next. Sorry. Just missed him.
I don't think so, but if...
The committee had a similar concern that Mrs. Manning had on that word, and I believe the... And I believe the committee walked out of our last committee meeting thinking that that had been adjusted. So I—you know, if we don't refer this back to the committee, I think it would be appropriate to change that word by an amendment to reflect "required" because, again, we just—we thought, perceptually, it left too inappropriately wide open.
So would you explain again? Are you saying—
I am suggesting that it does not need to go back to the committee—that we shared that concern. But beyond that, we think it's important to get this policy on the street. We've worked on it for several months. It's been back and forth. And timeliness is—you know, we could keep bringing this back and arguing fine points forever, but I—you know—and it may need another look downstream when we do with the consulting services. But that's not on the table tonight, and I think we need to try to get this approved tonight with that adjustment.
Ms. Weems?
I was just going to say something—I mean, this is pretty big. The Audit Committee and the auditor have brought this up for months and months, and I think we need to send it back and get the right wording because we're passing papers. Nobody really knows what the final thing is. We're getting yeses and we're getting no's. And so, send it back, and at least a week before our next meeting, have exactly what it's going to say so that we all know what we're voting on. A week's not—two weeks is not going to make any difference.
Ms. Manning?
Could you also—it also says, "Professional services are exempt from these provisions." And I understand the Virginia Public Procurement Act defines what professional services are, but that's not stated in here. Can we either reference the Virginia Public Procurement Act or define professional services somewhere in this? I thought the original—I thought the original draft of this had that in here, but this—I don't see it here.
No, I don't think we've ever defined it in there. In the citation, it does go to the Virginia Public Procurement Act. We could do—I could either footnote it or put in there what the Virginia Public Procurement—
Yeah, I would appreciate that. I don't see that on this.
Engineering services would not be professional.
Right.
People think that professionals may not meet the definition of professional under the Virginia Public Procurement Act.
Right. I understand that. It just doesn't seem clear in the policy. Thank you.
Any other questions on this or discussion? So, we need to clarify what your vote would mean. A yes vote means that you are sending it back to the policy. A no vote means that you decline to send it back to the Policy Committee. So the voting board is open. The motion failed. So we are now to the original motion of Policy 3-32. Is there any other discussion on this?
My question is for Mr. Edwards. Then, are you going to recommend at this point that we change "required" and what have you?
I think the simplest way would be to—can I do—I can do a second substitute at this point, yes.
Well, it's a new motion.
I would provide—or move that as a substitute motion that we approve it with that one-word change. And I'm going to defer to Mrs. Linetti if you would identify the paragraph and its number so that everybody is aware.
That would be under C, sole, single source purchases, subsection 1. Another subsection, G, it would read, "A unique professional expert is required." It would be replacing "requested" with "required."
So my motion is a substitute to approve it with that change.
Do you have a second? Ms. Riggs has seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, the voting board is open. Policy 3-32 has been approved. The Chair will now entertain a motion to approve Policy 4-32 concerning employee associations. The motion is made by Ms. Riggs, seconded by Ms. Melnick. Is there any discussion? Ms. Manning?
So I also have a question here. Under this policy, it states that Virginia Beach City Public Schools will process the membership dues for VBEA members. What is the cost to Virginia Beach City Public Schools to do this? Perhaps this is a Mr. Mira question.
It's actually a Mr. Hansiker question, but I will tell you, one of the requirements is that they have to pay back the cost of doing that.
It is reimbursed.
But I can't answer that. Mr. Hansiker can.
The question is, what is the cost—
To do the payroll deduction for the VBEA membership?
It's really a manpower issue because we require a certain amount of documentation from VBEA. It has to be processed through our payroll department. I don't have the number, but we could calculate an hourly rate, how many hours. I can't tell you that tonight.
Do they reimburse us for that cost, or do we—
Yes, they do.
We've never really billed them for that cost, but we could certainly do that.
So they've never paid for this cost in the past?
Never asked them.
Okay. So taxpayer dollars are being used to benefit the VBEA in collecting their membership dues, is what I'm hearing. So if that is the case, and the VBEA is benefiting financially from this policy, would there be a conflict for school board members who are also VBEA members to vote on this policy?
No. Under the Conflicts of Interest Act, if you're dealing with a transaction or matter, and you are a member of a group and it affects the entire group the same, there's no particular benefit for you. You can, now that you're a member of the group, but you can vote on that. It's not a violation of the Conflicts of Interest if you are a member of a group and it's going to affect everybody in the group the same way.
Mr. McDonald?
I just want to clarify on this policy that dues deduction is not limited to just one organization. It would be any organization that met the definition of an employee association.
Meaning?
It's not just VBEA.
Right. We have principals—
Just to add one piece of further clarification, a lot of that's taken care of through—signing up through our Employee Self-Serve. That's a relatively new thing, but we've been requiring that of all of our employee associations. So it isn't—it's taken care of by the employee themselves through their Employee Self-Serve program. And yeah, I've heard that a bunch about employee associations, and at least from the administrative perspective. Employee associations that we meet with include the VBEA, the VBA ESP, the VBA SSP. Those are the Secondary and Elementary Principals Association, the School Bus Drivers Association, the School Nurses Association. So there's a number of employee associations. I just want to make sure that they're equally represented in the conversation.
Thank you. Ms. Manning, if I can point out, too, if you look at what is now going to be numbered as D, additional services, again, numbered as 2, the very last sentence says, "Verification of such authorization, the deduction of dues shall be conducted by the administration, provided the employee association reimburses the school division for the actual cost of the services." The policy itself does call for that. I don't know how it's being handled.
So we need to be seeking that, then, since it requires it?
Ms. Rye?
Thank you. Just to offer further clarity, because we do have a previous speaker speak to this policy as well, just to clarify what it is and what it isn't. It's always been a personnel policy. It remains a personnel policy. And as Dr. Spence mentioned, there are at least a half a dozen present or past employee groups, and by virtue of their employment, they're typically afforded certain access, input, and other privileges, no different from a corporation where employees have certain privileges that third parties don't. So having said that, we do recognize we have many worthy third parties out there, including PTA, YMCA, Girl Scouts, a whole list. And they are governed in part by Policy 715, which concerns distribution of literature.
Policy 744 through 755 deal with outside organizations utilizing facilities. So that's where you would look for other organizations trying to use the facilities. 715 deals with publications and communications between outside agencies.
Okay. This policy is intended to define what employee associations are for Virginia Beach City Public Schools affecting current or retired employees of our school system. There are several associations in our school system that fall under this policy, such as the Bus Drivers Association or the Principals Association. There's even more. But the key word here is employee association, employees. This is for employees, current employees or retired employees only. This policy has been part of our policy since 1977, when it was created. So it is not correct to say that any sitting school board member was responsible for drafting or creating it. It was amended in 1990, 1991, 1993, 1999, 2004, and 2005. The main reason the Policy Committee started looking at this was because someone noticed that this policy had a link to Policy 4-8, which does not exist anymore. So Policy 4-8 originally contained the clarification that defined an employee association. So therefore, the Policy Committee simply updated this policy and eliminated the link to 4-8, since it no longer is there, but also clarified the definition of an employee association. So this has nothing to do with VBEA or any other organization out there. It simply has to do—this policy simply has to do with employees or retired employees of our school division.
Madam Chairwoman, if I can clarify, Policy 4-8 does exist, but what—the reference that you see in what's used to be Section 2 referred to a prior version of it, where it did define out different employee associations. We used a different process with it. The current 4-8 does not have any definition that explains that. So it didn't make sense looking at this policy. So 4-8 does exist, but the language that you were referred to in this policy does not exist in that policy any longer.
Thank you. I knew that there was something about 4-8 that didn't exist anymore. So—but this policy is intended to keep—is not intended to keep any other employee association from participating in our schools. It actually just gives clarification that our employees may participate in a group representing employee interests as long as it's made up of other employees or retirees of our school division, period. Any other questions? Ms. Weems?
Yeah, Ms. Linetti, if there's an education association that doesn't fall into, obviously, the employees or the PTAs, what policy would they go to? Or can the Policy Committee look into that?
There's two things you're dealing with—well, a couple of things here. We don't talk about employee membership dues anywhere else, other than—you do have payroll deductions. That's a different thing that the school board does once a year, looking at that. What significant here would be the use of facilities, after-hours, access to the mailboxes, the ability to carry on meetings during the day when teachers aren't—members are not doing their normal duties on there. The equivalent to that would be 715 on the policy number seven. Section 4 deals with employees. Section 7 deals with the community. So when you look at Section 7, if you want a publication or communication to go and you're an outside group that doesn't fit any other organization, Boy Scouts would come here, YMCA would come here, churches would come here. They go to the principal. If it's—to everybody, they go to meeting communications. But otherwise, they go to the principal and say, "I would like you to know about this event coming up with my organization." The principal looks at it. If she decides it's appropriate, she can send that out. She can send it through the kids. She can put it in the mailboxes for the employees. She makes that determination. If you want to use a facility, then you're going to look at 744. 755 really defines that which groups can do and who has to pay for it. Most of the groups you're talking about, a PTA or some association associated with the school, is not going to get charged for using the facilities. That's spelled out in 755.1, under regulations. Then there's degrees on it. Really, truly, outside organizations just running would have to pay for it. Most organizations or youth-based organizations do not have to pay pursuant to that regulation. It's just two different places, two different concepts, but they do have the ability to come in, use the facilities, and access the same communication systems.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Manning?
So I just want to clarify. If Spark Education Association wanted the same access to teacher mailboxes, deduction of dues, things like that, they would not have that, correct?
There is no other policy that will deal with deduction of member dues on there, partially because—well, what you'd have to do, there's another way to do that. If you want—we—you go to the school board. Anytime you're doing that, the school board, once a year, approves which deductions are allowed to be taken out. And that's a different process. You usually do that beginning of the physical year. They would have to come in that and make an appeal for that. As far as using communication stuff, they're going to use it 715. They'd be like a PTA, PTSA, a lot of other organizations. They would just look at it. The difference on the level of approval would be if it's just relevant to that school, the principal does it. If it's going to be division-wide, then meeting communications looks over, approves it, and then authorizes the principal to let it out.
I've reviewed the PTA, the Community Relations Policy, and the PTA one is very specific to the national PTA organization. It does not allow any other organization.
Correct.
So unless that is changed, they would not have access there either. So it would be a site-based—
So that's 731. So you would be looking at one of the other facility use ones.
Which is site-based and would have to be approved per principal at every school.
Right. So you'd have to either create another policy to do that, or they would be lumped in like Boy Scouts, Girls, because any other YMCA coming in, they would fall under that category. If you want one specific to education-type of organization, we're not looking at Section 7, the Section 7 policies right now, but we could look at that. Otherwise, I would lump them in where we would do other organizations. So it's not that they're not covered. We just don't have one specific to them.
And then they would have to—it would be site-based, and every principal would have to approve it.
If it's something generally that goes to everybody, the meeting communications would look at. Otherwise, it is principal-based.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, the voting board is open. And just to clarify, a yes vote is to approve, and a no vote is to disapprove. The voting board is open.
She just wants you to clarify.
Can we clarify?
I said, "A yes vote is to approve." Approve the policy. And a no vote is to disapprove the policy. Okay, Policy 4-32 has been approved. Item A under Information is about dual enrollment course additions. Welcome, Mr.—
Good evening. Good evening, Chairwoman Anderson, Vice Chair McDonald, members of the school board, and Dr. Spence. I'm here this evening to provide you with information regarding the possible addition of several dual enrollment courses to be offered to our students. The addition of these courses will continue to build opportunities for our students to receive an associate's degree by the time they graduate high school, as well as additional career certifications. This request is being presented to increase our dual enrollment offerings for all students with an interest in earning college credit while still in high school. Students will have to apply to TCC and meet their entry requirements via the Virginia Placement Test or with using specific SAT, PSAT, and SOL scores in order to participate in these courses. Ultimately, students will have the opportunity to work with their counselor and the transition counselors at TCC to develop a customized pathway for them. They can choose courses that would lead to a full four-year degree, whether it be an arts or sciences degree, or towards a specific certification program. For some, they may be able to obtain a full associate's degree prior to graduating high school with a combination of dual enrollment courses, concurrent enrollment, and advanced placement options. On this slide, you see the 16 courses we would like to begin offering as dual enrollment options for our students next year. As you see on this list, many of the courses are technical and career education courses. These courses are being requested in an effort to support regional work with increased pathways for welding and cybersecurity certifications. Detailed information on each course, including a listing of standards to be covered, is included in your board packet. By expanding our dual enrollment program, we can create an accessible pathway for students who are college-bound to complete an associate's degree while in high school. This slide demonstrates courses we will have in place for students that can count towards their high school diploma and their associate's degree at TCC. As you can see, students may opt for a blend of AP courses and dual enrollment courses. In addition to the associate's degree pathway, the courses we have within our TCE department around mechatronics and the courses we're asking for tonight add an array of certification opportunities for our students to meet regional needs. The costs for the division are minimal, with the greatest cost being textbooks where needed. Currently, TCC has a cost point of $45 per credit hour for students. However, the cost for courses on the TCC campus has not been determined for next year. Thank you for the opportunity to present you these courses this evening, and I stand ready to assess with any questions you may have.
Ms. Rye?
Hi. I think it's just worth reiterating, kind of like a A and B column for the public, the distinction between AP and dual enrollment, if you would.
Absolutely. Do you mind drawing back? Right there. Perfect. So when meeting with Dr. Summers and discussing different opportunities for our students, you'll see on the DE course column, those are dual enrollment courses, which would be on TCC's enrollment list for courses already. So it's like they're taking a course that would be offered on— So it's like they're taking a course that would be offered on TCC's campus or in our own homeschool campus. Those are regular college courses. On the next column for the advanced placement options, these are options that student may want to take an advanced placement course through the College Board curriculum. Where they take an AP test, they would have to score a three or higher generally to get that course credit. So those would be different options students may want to pursue in order to, to get the college credit for the route.
Mr. Edwards.
I'm excited and delighted that, that we're moving in this direction. Our efforts to tear down this firewall between us and higher ed is, is got, is finally into another chapter. And the tuition, I know there is some assistance at TCC. The, the credit hour cost should not deter people from at least pursuing it and seeing what their options are financially. And again, they need to look at pay me now or pay me later. I mean, if they're going to wait and take it to college, they're going to pay that or more. So the cost, if the dual enrollment is taught within our buildings, is zero?
The cost within our buildings is $45 a credit hour?
Oh, that's in our building.
Correct. Currently, this year, the cost is $45 a credit hour on their campus as well for dual enrollment courses.
Okay.
However, as you're well with the legislative agenda, that's, that's still fluctuating possibly.
Okay, okay.
However, TCC and Dr. Summers, they, they've been very willing to work with us and really want to try to keep that price point for us.
Okay. And as we hopefully move towards some de-emphasis of AP waiting and GPAs in the long run here, hopefully, dual enrollment will be equally, if not more attractive to the students. So I would only ask that we, once we get the stuff approved, that we gear up our guidance folks to make sure that the word gets out, because it's a real opportunity that I look forward to. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Ms. McLeod?
Thank you. Actually, I have several questions, and Dan, or Mr. Edwards just sparked one. So the question I have is, first off, you know, I'm very happy about this. All right, that's not a question, that's a statement. But, and I'm looking at English, and for the people out in the audience and watching, I want to clarify, it's $45 per credit hour. And if you're doing the English, that means you're going to pay $150 for the first semester and $150 for the second semester. I found that out senior year of ALI. So it was fine. So, but it's a $300 expense to have that, just for clarification that way. The question I have is, did you just pick, I mean, the AP bio, is that really comparable to oceanography?
So, no, that's a great question, Ms. McLeod. So in working with TCC, they need a science credit. It could be the AP bio, it could be AP chem, it could be AP physics that could fill that in. The only dual enrollment science course we have, though, is dual enrollment oceanography. So that's why it would match up. So they would have options there.
So the same thing for the art history, you were trying to find something of sort of comparable.
Correct. So they could have AP music theory as well.
And again, the huge benefit here is if they get, you know, an A in their dual enrollment class, it's already going towards their TCC GPA, it's going towards their GPA here. They're actually getting the credit with the AP. They have the, the risk of possibly getting an A in the class, but only getting a two on the test and not getting any credit at all. So it's, it's more of a safety net of sorts to go for the dual enrollment. The theater one, we always worry about, do we really have the qualified people within our schools to teach this? And we've talked about theater earlier in workshops, so that's kind of what brings me. Will this help our fine arts to be able to operate? And how do you handle that?
So you can see Mr. Buhner here from the VPAA.
I do.
And their theater teacher. She and, and Mr. Buhner have been working with TCC because the students at VPAA have been really requesting this. They are qualified for it. We have a couple other teachers across the city that are qualified for it. And the really discussion with high school principals, with TCC, with local universities about building programs so, so teachers can be home-qualified to teach it is really the goal. But if we don't have the courses to start, then there's no reason to gain the qualifications.
I think this is a wonderful idea, and I'm glad that you all are here. And Mr. Buhner knows my daughter well. My daughter did finish at the Performing Arts Academy, and she still had to take a basic art class her freshman year. So this would have given her that kind of option where she would have gotten credit. Even though she completed the dual strand, she still had to take a basic art appreciation, which was required at University of South Carolina. So thank you.
Ms. Malnuck?
Well, actually, Mrs. McLeod said it, as, as a friend of the arts, I'm just thrilled to see your two arts opportunities for students.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for this? Thank you, Dr. Pope.
Thank you.
Next, we have eight policy recommendations from the Policy Review Committee. Mrs. Lannity.
I'm not as exciting as Mr. Pope, but I'll do the best I can for you. You have a number of policies in front of you tonight on there. Some of them are relatively simple. The first one is Policy 455, having to do with leave, with or without pay for family medical leave reasons. All we're doing in this one is changing the title of a policy that, or regulation that was changed, and we needed to add in the disability programs under the VRS, the VRS plan, because that's affected, that was not in, this prior policy did not have that reflected on that. So that is the only change to Policy 455. 530 has to do with graduation requirements, diplomas, and certificates. If you go down to subsection C on this, this, and the superintendent could speak to this better than I could, but I will, when you, how you award credits is generally done, whether it needs to be year-long, or you look at them, the amount of credits or seat time, having to do that. The, what we, we were recommending to do on this one is that the superintendent is authorized to determine how you will award credits for, in lieu of a 70 or 140-hour clock time. Again, we're getting away from the clock time, seat time in there, we're looking at what makes up for, for the classes on there, and it just doesn't reflect how we currently award credits on there. So it's not that we don't award credits, it's that the superintendent will develop a regulation that more accurately reflects how credit is awarded. Moving on to Policy 630. 630 is a family life education program. I will tell you, the Policy Review Committee has been a long time looking at this. We've had a lot of recommendations, trying to get the language accurate and to reflect how it is currently handled. Significant changes that you will see on there are in subsection B, talks about parent legal guardians, adult students must be approved, must be provided the opportunity to review all family life education materials. That's not really changed, we just moved it up to that section. Obviously, people can come in, take a look at it, and then if you want to determine whether your child or you are going to participate, now you have that opportunity to see that ahead of time. A significant concern to the Policy Review Committee was the staff training. It doesn't come off very often, but we want to make sure only those persons who are qualified and certified to teach that, who have been through the appropriate training, are teaching this course, and it is only taught within those, those curriculums that are there. So this currently reads, "The superintendent or designees shall select and provide training for those teachers authorized to teach the FLE instruction. No person shall provide FLE instruction unless so selected, authorized." That was a point that the Policy Review Committee felt like needed to be clarified, that, that will only be taught in those courses in the manner that's certified by the Virginia Department of Education. There's an outdated reference to disabled students. We do not segregate our disabled students. Most of our, again, the vast majority of our students who qualify as disabled are in regular education classes. If a student cannot participate in one of these family life classes because of the student's ability to understand it, the IEP would address that for that particular student, how you would handle, if you would modify the curriculum. But again, we don't segregate our disabled students from family life education. The rest are just changes to the legal citations for this. All right, the next part is where it gets fun. Policy Review Committee was looking at, at the request of the school board, how do we appoint individuals to citizens advisory committees on there? If you looked at what we have currently in there, there's a mix of policies and regulations, different committees on that. And we were tasked with going back to the Policy Review Committee and saying, "Could we standardize what, what we're looking at?" Every one of these committees, where we asked citizens to come in, spend their time on a committee, we wanted to make sure that we were looking at adequately, getting a broad cross-section to do that. After a lot of time spent looking at that, the decision was made that we would have an overall policy, would be 721, having to do with citizens advisory committees. It would talk about the general theory on that, and within that, we were going to define what citizens advisory committees were. They were mixed in policy and regulation on there. And specifically, and at the request of the Policy Review Committee, we did elevate one of the committees that wasn't normally considered a citizens advisory committee, and that is the career and technical education, because that is so significant to what we're doing right now in Virginia Beach City Public Schools, and we're the leader in the Commonwealth and throughout the country on that. We wanted to make sure we'd elevated that for that. So if you look in section B, we've now said citizens advisory committees that are authorized, and you've authorized the following ones, the special education advisory committee, the general advisory council for technical and career education, community advisory committee for gifted education, the inter-agency adult basic education advisory committee, the school health advisory committee, the ad hoc strategic planning committee, and then we put a subsection, if you would need to create another citizen committee, you have that option. These have all existed in one form or another, we've just all elevated them and made sure that they are clarified on that. We've tried to standardize what will happen with the service on the committee. And again, this one is dealing primarily with those citizens you appoint, and with citizen committees you appoint, sometimes you have citizens appointed to them, sometimes you have outside agencies appointed, and they point somebody from them. Both of them are dealt in this one. So what we've done is talk about when, what they'll have to do. One of the suggestions that Mr. Edwards put forward was that we want to make sure that the school board hears from every one of these committees. Some of these committees are required by law to bring you an update every year, or they report on annual reports like SEAC or gifted. But we want to make sure that you heard from every single one of the committees. So one of this requirements we're now having is that every advisory committee has got to give a report to the school board at least once a year on the work that that advisory committee has done. We've also just clarified that the superintendent will be responsible for appointing staff members to support these committees, so these committees are not required to find out with staff members to handle that. We talked about tenure on there. One of the things that we wanted to make clear was getting a little confusing to us because often what happens are different tenures, people are being appointed throughout the year, as I'm going to explain a little bit later. We're now going to change that everybody who's a citizens advisory person is now going to have to start their term on Jan, July 1, and whenever their term ends, if it's two years, if it's three years, it will always end on June 30. That way, when you're looking at all the committees together, you will look mostly one time a year to do that, so you can look at who's applied and who would fit best on the committee. So that will standardize how your citizens are going to be doing. That's a little bit of a change, and we started talking with the committees, some of the committees already, they will have to amend their bylaws, they know that this is coming, they're waiting for this to be approved. So we've done that. We've also standardized in here to make sure, rather than you have to date, take 10, 20, 30 different citizens and change their appointment for them to do this, this policy is going to go ahead and authorize their term. If their term is going to end on March of this year, it will now end on June 30 of this year. We'll standardize it, so you don't have to reappoint people. We talked about school board liaisons, that was something that was important to the PRC, that we would have school boards. So you will now designate one school board member as a liaison to each one of these committees, and you will have one alternate. And again, we're keeping the number down so that we don't accidentally trip into the point where it becomes a school board meeting, we have to follow the open meeting laws on there. And again, that member is a liaison member, that member does not have voting authority. So that would be your overriding one. There was a lot of discussion on how do we appoint them, how are we going to be consistent in appointing them and follow the same process? Originally, I drafted this, you saw before, we put it into this policy. After some determination, we decided it was more appropriate in a regulation. So that is not something you would be approving, I think Ms. Rye sent that out to you. It now will be 721.1. Specifically, 721.1 is going to talk about the time period. What will happen now is as of January of every year, each one of these committees will let the clerk know that the following positions will come open on June, July 1. That way, you'll know who you have to do that. At that point, the superintendent will work with the clerk, and they will get notices out to the public that we are recruiting members for the following positions, and these are the requirements to fill those positions. All that information will come back to you on, by April 15, or the applications will do in them. At that point, we will get input from the various committees, if they have anything to say about these individuals that are applying for that, because sometimes it's important if a person has served on the committee before, or that gives us some time to check it out. It will have to come to the school board no later than May 15, the applications, and you will see all the applications, not just ones in the past that the committee's recommended. Everybody's applied for a certain committee, you will see that application on there, and you will have an opportunity to look at that. You will have to approve that no later than the second meeting in June. We gave you about a two or three meeting opportunity to do that. So you will then have the opportunity to look at all of them at one time, or have a couple of meetings over which to spread that. Some of the other conditions we put in, that we were looking for a broad cross-section, you would not discriminate in that, and when that, we would put in the requirements for that. Again, that had been presented to you last time, we decided it was more appropriate in regulations, but that will now appear in 721.1. To accomplish what we need to do after that, we then had to get rid of some of the policies and change them to regulations. So it looks bad, and you're not going to see all of them, but I can assure you, we have the regulations and they're ready to go up. So what happens here is you have seven, Policy 722, which is currently citizens advisory committee, special education advisory committee. That is now going to be changed to a regulation. It will now be 721.2. So it'll come after 721, which talks about how you appoint people and what their terms are. 721.2 will now be the SEAC committee on there. 724 says advisory committee gifted, again, we're removing this policy, it now becomes a regulation. It will now become regulation 721.4. It will look very close to what you see, and it's just some cleaning up, we're trying to standardize some of the regulations. Policy 726, citizens advisory committee, strategic planning committee, you're going to repeal this because that will then become regulation 721.7. And Policy 727, which is school health advisory board, will be repealed, and we're going to adopt a regulation 721.6. All those regulations have already been drafted, and if there are no further changes on that once these are approved for action by the school board, they'll either be repealed or you'll approve Policy 721, we will then immediately put up the regulations. So there will be no committee that's out there that does not have a supporting regulation. The committee looked at it, we talked about doing multiple policies, it felt it better to have an overall umbrella policy, then all the regulations fall under, so everybody with, all the committees are treated the same. Again, those policies and regulations are available for you to take a look at, if you want to see those, but those would not come, as regulations would not come before you as a school board, that will be the superintendent's responsibility to amend those. And I think Ms. Rye can ask, answer any questions. I know you gave some information to the school board members about this.
Do we have any questions? Ms. Weems?
Thank you. On the, um, the school board policy about the advisory committees, 7-21. Yeah. I really like that one, I like the way that you standardized the time, you know, from, so that everybody would be on the same schedule, and that you extended it so that everybody would be consistent. And I also like that there has to be a report once a year, because I think that is so needed. Now, okay, so we're going to vote on those because it's policy, but now with the regulations, we also.
You do not approve regulations, that's the superintendent's responsibility.
Okay, so how do we, because with the regulations, with that same, same item, citizens advisory committees, I have a lot of concerns about the regulations. So, so would you advise me about what I need to do in the next two weeks?
I'll be happy to, we've already done them, and I'd be happy to share them with you. And you, if you, if you had comments to make, I would feed them back to Dr. Bergen, and he will take a look at them, if we need to make corrections to them, but they're all drafted and ready to look at.
Okay, because I know, I was just at one of the advisory committees the other day, and they were quite confused about this, because, you know, and you were there too, and I remember one member saying, "So basically, we don't really appoint our own members, the school board's going to do it." So, you know, I just kind of want to have some sort of balance here, so they still feel that they know what's best.
It is a culture change for them, whereas the committees recruited and brought the people up to you and vetted them, now it's going to come down, you are going to do the recruitment, you're going to look at, and then the committees will have an opportunity to see all the, all the applicants for our SEAC, of Special Education Advisory Committee, will be able to see the applications, they will feed that information back, we will get that back to you while you're considering this. But the difference will be that you are now seeing everything, you will do it division-wide. I think their thought was that this will give more citizens an opportunity to look, "Oh, this is how I can get involved with my school board, here's a multiple committees." It would also give you the opportunity to look and say, "Oh, who's looking for a position, and where would they best fit for us?"
I just don't want to diminish the, the advisory committees, I have the utmost respect I have the utmost respect for them, they're volunteers, and they have the expertise because they're advising on a subject matter that they know a lot about and that they're passionate about. So I just want to have a happy balance there. Thank you.
Ms. Rice?
Yes, and just to state for the record, the appointment authority has always rested with the School Board. But we do respect the input from the committees and we took into account the, I think, this was one of the rare cases where almost every School Board member up here weighed in on one facet or another of this. And so we took that very seriously. So we're offering the committees the option for input on these applications before they come to us for discussion.
I think it will free up your committees to do the work that they're actually appointed to do, because it takes a significant amount of time for their nominating committees to go out, get the information, get it on their agenda, and then come in here. Now, they won't have to do that work, but they will have the opportunity to do it. So hopefully, it's one meeting for them. And if they want to come in here and comment, they have that. But unfortunately, I will remind you, this work then becomes your responsibility to handle.
Mrs. Manning?
So I like most of what is in here. My concern is with the fact that we're changing, this is a School Board advisory committee or committees, and we're changing it from a policy that the School Board votes on to a regulation which the superintendent decides. No offense, Dr. Spence. But it's a School Board advisory committee, which regulations can get changed without School Board input. And so that is correct.
As you saw last time, I did bring it to you, that everything that you saw was in the backend of this policy. It was a recommendation of the Policy Review Committee that it be broken down into a regulation, put over into a regulation. So it looks almost identical to what you saw, it's over in the regulation. I do understand that, but that was what the PRC decided.
Am I correct in that, that this could be changed without the School Board having input on it?
It is the superintendent's responsibility for the regulations.
Thank you.
Mrs. Rice?
But if I could clarify, it was a specific request from our committee that the School Board do have input into this regulation, which was pretty unusual. And so, and just like with any regulation, we're always free to share input with the superintendent, even though we don't vote on regulations. But this regulation is most definitely a product, not just of the PRC, but the full School Board. And again, we just felt it was important, in order to approve the policy, to have the context of the procedures.
Okay. Is there no further questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Linetti. Do we have any standing committee reports? Ms. Malnuck?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I attended the Governor's School for the Arts Regional Board meeting this past week with, or last week with Dr. Gatling. We reviewed the five-year audition and enrollment data, which is increasing. But the highlight of the meeting was a presentation on musical theater and instrumental departments trip to Japan. It was quite a life-changing trip for those students. They visited Miyazaki, Kitakushu, Osaka, and Tokyo, and they were gone about 15 days. And they stayed with host families, and the Board was thrilled with their presentation. I just wanted to let you know about some upcoming events with Governor's School. This Friday, the instrumental music department will perform in the Centerra Heart Hospital at 2:15 in the lobby. Saturday at 1 o'clock, the visual arts department has their wearable art fashion show at MacArthur Center Mall. Friday, February 23, dancers and musicians will perform in the Virginia Arts Festival production of Rhythm Live at the Harrison Opera House. March 1 through 4, the theater department presents The Taming of the Shrew in the GSA Dallas Black Box Theater. March 9 through 11, the vocal department presents Dido and Anias and Soro Angelica at the ODU Theater. March 15 through 18, musical theater presents Cabaret in the Dallas Black Box. And March 24 is the 30th Annual Gala at the Main. If anyone's interested in any of those performances, let me know.
Mrs. Rikes?
Yes, I've been to several of our Sister Cities Association of Virginia Beach as one of the liaisons, and Dottie Holtz has been with me. We are currently looking at the Youth Ambassador, and we've had, I know in one particular, we interviewed her from Tallwood yesterday, Emily Myers. We are raising funds to bring awareness, gain membership, raise funds for Sister Cities, and we are getting ready, because I spoke up so much, I am now the committee chair for a breakfast that we are doing on the 19th of April. So it will be at City Club, Town Center. We met with Barbara Lewis yesterday. And so we will be asking corporations, and you guys will be invited. So I'll give you more information as it comes about. So we're working very hard and we have some great people on there, on the Sister Cities Association.
Thank you. Mrs. Felton?
Good evening and thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to make a small report, it won't be too long. I am now part of the federal relationship network with, deals with the federal government. And we had a very exciting, extensive conference. We met with Senator Kane and Senator Warner Staff and Representative Scott Taylor on last week, discussing a couple of things. But the main thing that stood in front of us, we talked mostly about the call, the Perkins Career Technology Education Act. We wanted to know that was important to us as well. And we also talked a bit about the IDEA Act, which is very important to individuals here. And we discussed a little bit about Title II, which is in reference to our teachers in the federal act. It was a long conference, it is a long brochure, and I would ask my colleagues if they wanted to know more about it. I would have it on my, I can email you information. And I was waiting for some of the video to download so that you can see them as well. It was very productive, a lot going on, and I enjoyed networking with the other constituents that was there. So if any of you want to know more about this federal relationship network, please let me know. It was a lot to take in, and it's a lot to talk about, too much to try to tell you in one sitting. So connect with me if you'd like to know more details on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Felton. Mrs. Williams?
Yes, I attended two special education meetings. One was CSEP, also with Dr. Gatling. And we looked over all the data, the numbers are about the same, we have plenty of space for extra students that need to take advantage of those programs. And if you want minutes of the meeting, I'll be glad to send them to you. As far as the staff there, CSEP did have, I think, seven promotions, and six of them were teacher assistants being promoted to teachers. So that is very good. And they, I asked the director what the name of their program was, and they don't really have a name of it, but they do spend so much time with professional development, trying to grow from within. And so six out of seven were teacher assistants, so I thought that was excellent. Also, last night, I attended SEAC, and they usually meet on Mondays, but they have two-night meetings a year. And last night, they spoke about transition after college, and it was an excellent program. So I thank them for that. The next meeting for SEAC will be Monday, March 12, at 9:30 in the morning over there, Alaskan Road. And just to report on behalf of my colleague, just a second, on the legislation, the opioid bill that we're pushing passed unanimous to be statewide 100 to 0 yesterday. So yay. Excited about that. So thank you for all the help with that, folks.
You know what, I really would like you just to elaborate just a little bit on what that is and kind of give kudos to our city.
Yes, yes.
Because we've worked really hard, and I know you've pushed for that, but please explain further on that.
Yes, well, most of you know, my daughter was, died four years ago because of her addiction to opioids. And so I have really pushed that we educate folks and try to prevent this. And so I went to Dr. Spence and he gave me the thumbs up. So my next move was to go to Dr. Cashwell, and she and her staff kind of revamped the SOL health and PE curriculum, the health curriculum, so that it's really laser-focused on opioids, opioid addiction, what it looks like. And it starts from first grade and it goes through 10th grade. And so we, they completely implemented it in our city, and then people were asking about it. So we presented it at the Virginia School Boards Association, and then a delegate took it on and introduced it as a bill. So we, Dr. Cashwell has been sending information to the delegates, and it had to get through the subcommittee, and I was able to go to Richmond and testify, and then the full committee, and now the House, and then it'll be sent to the Senate. So basically, what it is, is it's really educating our kids on opioids and painkillers because we're in the middle of an epidemic now and a crisis. And I think it's going to, it's everything in there that I wish I would have known four years ago, so that hopefully students and parents will know. And I just want to thank Dr. Cashwell for all your help because it's really going to make a difference, and I really do appreciate it.
I think it's fantastic that a curriculum that we developed in our city is now going to become a statewide curriculum.